Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Jay.
And I'm going to ask the people who are participating virtually to please silence microphones unless you have given the floor to speak. So, welcome everyone who is here on this ring for this important public hearing regarding the bylaws changes. Cheryl Jacobs is our moderator, and I will turn matters over to her.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for showing up today on such a bad hair day. And we're going to take questions and comments from the people who are present. And what I'm going to ask you to do is come to the front. I'm going to stand where there is a mark for you to stand for this black tape. And if you stay here, the camera will pick you up and a mic will pick you up. And I will ask you to state your name and home address before you speak. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I'm ready.
Elaine, state your name and your address and come to the black tape mark. Thank you.
Elaine Brady, 812 Yacht Club Drive. And I do have a question that I'm going to ask you here for a couple of minutes because I'd like to provide some information that I think is relevant in order to make sure candidates and members along with the board understand the requirements that you need to be doing for excluding those who are a felony, to rule or serve. I actually help out my sister-in-law in her mother's fourth school, and this is what I do for her because there is indeed a process to do background checks, and I'm familiar with those requirements. While I can't get into all of it in the time allotted, I'm just going to mention some key things. Background checks cannot be done by simply checking public websites or even legal websites, like we do with property records. And I think, you know, we've seen there even an honest mistake can cause unintended consequences. Unlike property records, criminal records are actually governed by federal laws to obtain and use them in order to even make a determination. In order to obtain those records, all candidates will have to fingerprint it in Maryland and provide a notarized release of information for each state in which they have lived in the past five years. Candidates will also have to sign an FBI release as all information provided has to be certified by the federal criminal justice department's information system in order for states to even release that information to you, what most people know as a rap sheet. There are parameters for disqualification. It must be absolutely clear and in writing and follow federal laws or discrimination, including race, religion, gender, and can't be used just because someone might not like someone. The information on the rap sheet may not be shared with anyone other than the candidate. If used to embarrass, harass, or cause harm to someone's reputation or livelihood, it is not considered just idle gossip, but can be accessible to both individuals and associations. And even in the case of flavor news, such as posting information on social media, could be criminal charges to those who do that. There are also time requirements which could greatly affect an election. As a candidate, if disqualified, has up to 60 days to appeal, so that absolutely has to be accounted for in that process. There are also something that just a minor thing that needs to be addressed, but there are costs involved for fingerprinting and obtaining records from the states. And while that's substantial, it should be decided who is going to be responsible for those costs. There are a myriad of other processes which must be followed, both by the association and one you can hire somebody to do some of it. Some of it does rest with the association because that's where the responsibility for obtaining, using, safekeeping, and destruction of records have to absolutely be followed. I would suggest that the current board go through the process as it seems not only fair that they're willing to do so, as you require it of others who will serve on either. But more importantly, and really in good faith to the community, you need to be able to ensure it's being done legally and all requirements are in place prior to the election. You actually can't even hold an election until you have all of that in place. As this is voted on, I think we also should take into consideration if this is even necessary. As board members have no access to funds, nor can any one individual on the board make a financial decision that would harm the association. Decisions are made by a majority vote, providing real little risk. There's actually a higher risk with employees who do have access to funds or are able to authorize invoices for payment, along with interacting with children in our recreation programs and locker rooms and deposits. To my knowledge, there's no background checks being done for those employees, and I'm not suggesting that we do that, you know, or that we, you know, have a problem there, but I'm using it as an example to decide if this is even necessary as I think, you know, that would be a much higher risk than, you know, someone who's serving on the board. This community is 50 years old. There has never been any inference in 50 years that there has been a problem with a board member. And if this bylaw is in effect, I think there is a much higher risk of someone who may feel that they were discriminated against or if there's any misuse of their information filing a complaint with the criminal justice system where they would do an active investigation of that or even civil lawsuits that will certainly cost this association much more when you're looking at the amount of money that people get for discrimination and misuse of this type of information. It could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. And while, you know, you never know if that's going to happen. So, now my question.
Unfortunately, you're almost at the out of your five-minute time period, so if you could speed it up quickly.
I'm getting to the question. I guess, and maybe Rick, and then the chair, and then Charon, are they aware of this and have any plans been put in place to follow these regulations?
Well, the issue which you brought up regarding background checks is complex, as you know. In one aspect, if you are running background checks for professional businesses, associations, what have you, there has to be consent of an individual that the background check is going to be done on and the release of information. And it's also covered on the Fair Credit Act as well because it's a slippery slope when you're dealing with background checks of an individual. To your point of filing, you know, for a background check after having that consent and the storing of that information because you're dealing with Privacy Act information too as well because when you're pooling information, you're pooling social security, you're pooling addresses, you're pooling a lot of different information from an individual. The other thing where you get into some legalities is how are you going to store that personal information? And as an executive in HR, we have a, I am the administrator of pulling background checks for where I work. I'm the sole source of that information. That information stays with me. I cannot divulge the information out to a vast variety of people of what we find in there, other than stating that the individual's not qualified for a particular position, and that's as far as that goes. Then the destruction of that type of information is very, very, it is five days, and you have to destroy it, and it cannot be in anybody else's hands or viewed by any else's hands, that information, if you're pooling that. There is a lot of legalities that you're dealing with in the background check information. An individual can pull background on anybody for personal reasons, and when I say personal reasons, let's just say hypothetical that you, somebody is dating somebody. I'm just putting out there because people pull, they go online and they pull background checks on individuals. That's not a thorough, reliable background check of somebody because it has nothing to do with a position that they're applying for, a business association or anything. That type of information cannot be used, that personal background check cannot be used for a professional search at all. There's a distinct separation of that in doing so. So, it is a slippery slope, and, you know, as far as the board is concerned, that's something that can, if not properly controlled, creates huge risk.
And as the board, I guess, for questioning this, has the board even discussed that or put those revisions?
Elaine? Thank you. We're going to have to move on. Thank you very much. Next person would like to either ask a question or comment? At the black tape mark, state your name and your address, please.
This has nothing to do with social distancing, right? Just a little humor. Good morning. Slavon and Trendik, 20 Drobridge Road. I decided to write down my comments so I don't go off script. While observing debates sparked by the proposed revisions to the OPA bylaws, I thought of that epic movie, The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly. I felt the proposed changes had a little bit of all these three themes. We all know the bylaws are an important legal document. We also know that the board lost two major lawsuits recently, and during that time, our bylaws were heavily scrutinized. So, a reasonable conclusion is that our very long and comprehensive, 25-page bylaws document could use some improvements. Just for a reference, for those of you that don't know why I underscored this, Columbia Association is one of the largest associations in the country, over 100,000 people. Their bylaws are 10 pages long. What do they know that we don't know that they can squeeze in 20 in the 10 pages? Unfortunately, I wonder if your proposed changes will produce the desirable results or make the matters more complex. Therefore, I recommend you postpone your planned referendum mailing and dedicate more time and consideration to this important undertaking. For example, I will move certain language that is in your proposed changes or already in the bylaws to appropriate resolutions. Also, some issues may be better covered in a form of a policy manual or as an operational rule. This approach will help you streamline the bylaws to fewer pages, making them easier to understand and, more importantly, easier to enforce. In summary, if the board chooses to submit these proposed changes to the membership for consideration and for a vote, I'm going on record to say that I will simply vote no on all of them, and I encourage those to follow me, to call me for any questions that might have, and to follow my approach on the vote. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Do we have any other? Mr. Reynolds. State your name and your address, please.
I'm going to step over the line. As usual. Go around on 84th and 85th. Good morning. I have a question. Mr. Farken hits it. I've had people tell me that you support the definition of owner of record that's been proposed here. And if I read it correctly, maybe I'm not, if it had been in effect when you run for the board directors, it would have made you ineligible. So, would you care to address that particular point?
As far as the whether it was written previously?
Whether, number one, do you support the proposed definition of owner of record?
I do support the definition as the motion that's put forward as more in detail on what an owner of record is as far as dealing with trusts. You're dealing with trust. It outlined that a co-trustee of a trust, trustee of the trust is eligible to run for the board.
He does, but I believe it also says that named trustees on the deed or co-trustees named on the deed, and I don't believe your name was on that deed. But that aside, I was just a little surprised if you wouldn't support that, but that is the most important issue, I believe. But beyond that, I've often disagreed with you kind of because I think I'm going to agree with you on it. I think this whole thing has been a bit of a knee-jerk reaction. There's no rush for any of this. Nothing that we're doing here is critical to this association, not one thing, not one Maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's not a knee-jerk reaction. That's the way I see it as an association. And given there is nothing critical, there is no super rush. This should be put off. In fact, given all the things that have gone on with this board, I wouldn't even think about bylaw changes, maybe until an election after, the one day after the next year. Maybe we'll have less political contention among all the people involved. Anyway, I'm with Mr. Trendik. Vote no across the board is my advice to association members. Do not abstain. Do not not send your vote. It won't count at all. Send the vote back, check everyone off as a no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. State your name and your address.
My name is Jim Trummel. I am from Warden, Napples Court, 216. My comments here this morning are on behalf of the Bylaws and Resolutions Advisory Committee, of which I am a member and the chair. Before I make my specific comment on the owner of record provision, however, the committee has also submitted to the board various comments on other sections, other resolution, proposal sections that are being considered for going to a referendum, and I wish the board would give them consideration as part of the public hearings process. In two meetings, one February 25th and more recently March 4th, the committee considered the owner of record provision in the proposals. The February 25th meeting concluded all other proposals. The March 4th meeting focused solely on section 1.11, owner of record, proposed definition. The committee recommends that the provisions regarding representatives of corporations, LLCs, and partnerships being eligible for membership on the board is through candidacy or through appointment to the board be removed and relocated as a disqualification for being on the board of directors. The co-trustee, trustee of property, real property trust provision would remain as eligible, but not the corporate partnership representative eligible. The reason for this is that those representatives have an inherent conflict of interest. Their interest is in the property as the objectives of the entity. Owners of properties such as the rest of us have the commitment to the association that representatives do not. Representatives do not have that personal commitment, contract commitment to the declaration of restrictions. They do not have the commitment to maintenance of the property, the use of the property, what goes on on property, the permits, and those kinds of things, and the architectural guidelines. They have no personal commitment there. They have no personal commitment to the payment or the assessments of the association. Those representatives are ill-suited to be members of the board of directors of this association and responsible for the management of the assets of the association as well as the individual members' rights and obligations of the association. The committee recommends that before this proposition goes to the board, goes to the membership for vote, that it be revised to take out this eligibility on the part of representatives. Thank you. May I make one more comment? I've heard once or twice now, vote against the whole thing. In my opinion, that's a very narrow, short-sighted approach. There are provisions in this proposal, proposed amendment package, that should be and really need to be clarified or put in place. Whatever may be your interest, an objection to some of them, fine, vote against them. Don't just simply wipe it all out. That's a very narrow and, to me, unacceptable, not very well-thinking proposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trummel. Yes, ma'am. If you can, please. Do you need some assistance?
I'm a little stronger than I look.
I'm Karen Judas, and I'm the property owner at the Key Waters Hatch Court. And I had actually not intended to speak, but after hearing the other comments, I wanted to give you a little bit of advice.
Please do.
I graduated from Yale Law School, Benjamin, years ago, and I can tell that this is a very controversial issue from the previous comments, and it's also, unfortunately, I believe, very difficult to follow because it's very controversial and it seems to be, it seems to be creating ill will among the community, which is most unfortunate. So, I wanted to follow up on some of the other comments, which is to say that there's no rush, and it might be a good idea simply to give the passage of time a way of creating peace among the community. And that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present that would like to ask a question or make a comment? Okay, Josh, I'm going to turn it over to you then.
I don't have any hands raised. Is anybody participating virtually that wants to speak?
Why Larry? I would, I would like to speak.
Name and address, please.
Ken Waters, 27th and 28th, Bergness Drive. I think the, maybe one of the best comments made has been about taking our time in making changes, and I think more time is needed that we need to educate the community better, and I think this should be done after the next election. That's my comment.
Thank you. Josh?
That's all I have. Anyone else?
Madam President, I think that's it.
Yeah, I'll just make a single comment about the rushing issue. This process has been, this has been in process for two years. These bylaws changes have been under discussion and under scrutiny by the board, by the Bylaws and Resolutions Committee, by a bylaws change work group, and the board has had considerable discussion. We have publicized every step of this process. All of the meetings that engage discussion about these bylaws changes have been open meetings, and so I think the perception that this is being rushed is not, is not an accurate perception.
I do understand that the bylaws committee has worked long and hard and appreciate all of that, and so, you know, I maybe don't feel like some others that we should just completely check off no for that reason. However, there were some additional bylaw changes that were added at the 11th hour. They had not had the same scrutiny and length of time to really well think those out, and I think those are the ones that people are most concerned about.
Thank you, Elaine. Would any other board member like to address the audience here or online?
So, specifically to Elaine's last comment, to rush the judgment. Yes, there were things added at the last minute, but the items added at the last minute typically were the ones that have been worked on the longest. Some of these, you may disagree, some of these items have gone back for years, and I can cite specific things that have come up that have created potential legal issues to do it. One of them, for example, when you have to pay your fee, when you have to pay your assessment because we nearly got into a court case when somebody had paid by one date and there was a conflict with the date that it could be paid. That has drug on for three years. That was in the bylaws, that was one of the last-minute ones. The other thing about rushing to judgment, I hate to bring up something that's an inconvenient truth, but unless you've been living in a cave in Afghanistan, we basically got skewered by a court of law that said our bylaws are in conflict with each other. We don't have proper procedures to implement the bylaws that we have, and the procedures that we did have, we did a shitty job of following. Okay? That court, that is not Maryland law. That is a case that can be referenced. If we had an election, like upcoming, and if somebody withdrew, or if somebody died, or if somebody got divorced and they were in joint tenants and were in custody, we could be in the same situation as upcoming election that we were in the last election because we have the same bylaws that will go into effect if these don't pass. We have the same court ruling that's a reference case not been appealed and determined to be Maryland law, and we're in the same deep hot water. That's why some of these changes have come in. The changes that we recognized almost from day one of the litigation that we were in that our bylaws were incapable of handling that kind of situation in a legal context. Those were addressed almost immediately by attorneys. Those ones were developed as the court ruling came out. The other add-ons were these things that have drug on. Director Trendik's former petition. We have, whether we like it or not, an attorney's opinion that says we need 845 valid signatures to hold a referendum. We have another attorney that has a different position, again, challengeable in court that's been dragging on for two years. We're trying to address it, not because we're opposed one way or the other, but we just happen to believe as a board that issue to issue, board to board, referendum to referendum, the number of votes required to hold it should be the same and not thrown up in the air each time. Those are the issues we're trying to address.
Madam President, do you wish to allow this to continue?
Yes, it's a forum for discussion as well as comment.
Mr. Reynolds.
Frank, I'm not buying your doom sticks in there, okay? This is being rushed because you moved it out. There's a lot of personal stuff going on here behind the scenes. Nobody, any other word. And this is meant to get something out, was meant to get something out before the election. And you're And your inclusion in your initial ones of things like saying that the spouses, spouse of a candidate with a felony would be out and all this kind of stuff, that made, in my mind, perfectly clear what your intent was. If not spoken directly, then you made it obviously clear to anybody with half a brain what the intent of all this was. And that tells that in either. So, but we've operated for 50 years, over 50 years. We've had elections coming. The odds of a situation like Mr. Farron did, could come up again, sure. Where are the odds of it? There is no rush here, Frank. And I respect Mr. Trummel. And it is narrow to say, vote against everything. It is. But given the current situation, I think it's the only reasonable thing to do. Because too much of this involves political controversy, political, personal animosities on both sides of this issue. I think association members need to say, stop. Wait until everybody here maybe is gone, and then do the bylaws. I mean, going off the board.
I would just respectfully disagree with you, Joe. I mean, I, we understand what's going on in the community, okay? But the issues are the issues. And I'll address this, one of the specific ones. Look, okay, and I'm going to compare two issues. We had an issue on short-term rentals that we're going to go through the process of changing the declarations or the predictions on. And members of the board here were contacted by people, and I was contacted by numerous amounts of people that said, this is good, this is bad, this is indifferent. Okay? Whether you choose to believe me or not, I will tell you, over the past year, many more people have contacted me expressing a concern that a group from outside this association, not consisting of homeowners, not consisting of people that live here, and under the influence of maybe criminal elements, are trying to do something with our property portfolio. Look, none, it's all rumor and speculation. It goes on in the community.
Excuse me, excuse me. We're going to have to have one person talking at a time because of the acoustics in here, I was told.
Yeah, they're saying, they're saying, I mean, and as recent as a couple, somebody called, we have a bunch of grifters trying to take over things in the association. Now, look, none of these, it's rumor, speculation, and innuendo that's tearing the community apart. I agree with you. Okay? But the way that I could add to address it, and the way that I thought of doing it, was, okay, if you're afraid of a criminal influence, keep the criminals away from the management and financial decisions of the board. Okay? Other people up here, specifically since you mentioned Mr. Farron, he questioned me directly. He said, what are you up to? Okay? And I answered him the same way. I'm not targeting a person, I'm targeting keeping criminal influence away from our management and financial decision-making process. Other directors, same question. So they've come up with a different thing. There was, the reason we withdrew them is not because we're less concerned about that being a remote possibility. And it is a remote possibility. It's just that somebody had a better idea to protect the assets of the corporation. And it consisted of an amendment made by one director, amended by a second, and amended by a third. So we have to address the concerns when they come up, even if they're remote. Whether it's simple things, like putting doors here, or whether it's more esoteric things. And that's all we've attempted to do. Nothing more, nothing less. And I completely understand the controversy involved in doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Any other board member wish, Mr. Parks?
So I want to address the notion of just voting no across the board, right? And I'm going to stick with Jim. There are some proposals there that warrant consideration, okay? So when we're going through this process, you know, the idea is to try, and as a board, you're trying to, you know, present the information for scrutiny by the membership, who in turn will hopefully understand the benefit of such a move and vote in the affirmative. However, ever since the very beginning in this whole process, I've shared with my colleagues, we're rushing this. We're going a little bit too fast. A vast amount of information is not going to be consumed by an individual. When it is about chunking, people look at something, you take seven things, and that's it. You are no longer focused on that. You're basically written off. And what do we have, 30 here? Right? So the average person is probably not going to put the scrutiny and the, I guess, the analysis involved in making a decision for all 30, you know? So the idea here is that, what's the practical sense of doing this? One would be to provide more information, more time for things to develop, more time for people to, who are interested, for people to ask a question. Hey, now that we had that first town hall, you know, I went back and rethought about it, and I have another question. And we can start to clarify more and more. And the idea of, of passing these proposed changes increases. Because, you know what, theory of minimum effort dictates that, hey, if there's 30 here, vote no. I really don't care. I'm just not interested because I haven't had enough time to, to assess the situation. The other part of it, too, is, for example, both sides goes back to vote for and vote against. For example, vote for, I know it's a little self-service, the one I talked about, but we just came right from the Bylaws and Resolutions Committee about the number of votes before a referendum can be passed. The idea would be, it's got to be 40% of the eligible votes to be cast, okay? The idea would be, okay, there's 8,452, it's got to be, you know, let's say 7,000 of them that pay their assessments, right? So in order for a referendum to, to go through, you know, 40% of those 7,000 have to have cast a vote for it, okay? The argument, and Jim, this was Jim's, I'm taking words right of Jim's, suppose a small faction of people, of 100 people, you know, are the only ones that were voting, and they voted to turn something over or change something in the community if the vast amount of the people in the community didn't want to have happened. So it's, it's a safeguard. On the opposite side of it, when I look at, like, was it 502A where a subject was convicted of a felony? All right, so if people are convicted of a felony, that, that assumes you're going to have to do a background check on that. Okay? So now we're doing a background check. We've incurred cost, we've incurred risk, and we have, we don't yet have a process, although I suspect we'll develop one. But what, that burden of risk far exceeds any benefit that we would see in conducting that individual's background check. I think we're far, much more risk of having something legally challenged on that decision than we are if we do that. Now, I somewhat agree with Frank that, yes, we certainly don't want nefarious individuals or unscrupulous individuals, you know, have any kind of influence over protection of resources. But in practicality, let's be reasonable, folks. We're talking about, let's say, one vote out of seven, you know? And we, as board members, do not interact with the financial system whatsoever. Yes, we would, would vote on a spending issue, we would vote on a policy per se, but, you know, as far as, you know, specific interaction that could put the, you know, put the association's asset at risk is, is probably impossible to happen. So the idea here is that, if you don't understand something, vote no. But I would offer, even though it's probably not going to be well-received, I would offer that we give it a little bit more time. Because again, I think, you know, at least there's some people out here, there's some people, obviously, on the, on the meeting that are interested in this. But if this is the only amount of interaction we have with the membership regarding these important rules, then chances are, they're probably just going to go, never mind, just vote no. And then what have we accomplished? Nothing. So the idea is, to me, to increase the chances of success, which means we've addressed an issue, and we think the membership should give us their, you know, their vote on it. If we're not going to go, we're willing to put the work in and give it time to gestate, then, you know, I think we're just going to face a situation where none of these are going to get passed. So, my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other board member? Mr. Farr, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay. Mr. Prun?
No.
Madam President?
I would like to, kind of build on what Doug has said. I do disagree with Doug that additional time is going to cause people to look at these more carefully. As I look in, across this room, I look, recall the people who have attended the last several board meetings, either virtually or in person, they're the same people. These are the people who are most engaged, most drilled into this process, and are speaking most vehemently about their position. I think that, and it's a couple of issues. They're not talking to us about some of the wording changes that clarifies other parts of the bylaws. They're not speaking to us about things that are non-controversial. They're speaking to us about a couple of issues. Each member has the opportunity to vote on those issues the way they see fit. I'm going to agree with, with Jim Trummel, that voting against all of them negates hundreds of hours of time that has gone into the development of language, the scrutiny of this language by counsel, for many, many bylaws changes that are not in the least controversial. And I think it's extremely disrespectful of our Bylaws and Resolutions Committee, our work group, the individuals who have put these hundreds of hours into studying these bylaws, discussing them, consulting with counsel, to just say, vote against all of them. If there are individual bylaws, changes that you're not in favor of, vote against them. You know, that is the power of your vote. That is the power of your membership in this process. Use that power productively, not destructively. I'm going to also disagree that in a year, this board is going to be less controversial, or two years, or three years, there's going to be less contention on the board. For 50 years, there's been contention on the boards. For 50 years, there's been politics or allegations of politics on the board that has driven the decisions that are made by this board. Time is not going to change that. The only thing that, that I ask of the membership now is that this is a very important process. Hundreds of hours have gone into this by many, many people. Do your part and read these bylaws. If you have questions of clarification that you have not asked today, email us, call us. We'd be happy to clarify any of these other bylaws. And vote yes on the ones you agree with, vote no on the ones you disagree with. Don't, this, this concept of voting them all down feels like holding the process hostage until your will is served in this process. Your will will be served when you vote.
Elaine wanted to speak before, I'll let you speak. If you'll, if you'll, just come up to the tape mark, please. We aren't trying to film, record all of this.
I do take a little offense with that, and blame that on the community. Because I do agree with you. I think that the Bylaws Committee has worked long and hard. And it isn't the community that has created some of the controversy. It is the board, like, at the last minute, putting in some generous bylaw changes. But, you know, some people do object to it. So don't put it on the community that they're not being fair. It's probably something that shouldn't have been done by the board to begin with, if you really wanted this process to go through. Because, you know, I understand, the bylaws need to be cleaned up, and we do it about every decade or so, because we find out new things. But the board really caused this problem, so don't put it on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trendek, I believe, was next.
Thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments in reaction to what you have stated yourselves, and some of our members, including Jim Trummel and Mr. Reynolds. In my comment, I recommend that, as a first course of action, is really for you to go back to the drawing board and to streamline our bylaws. That's the key message. Even the definition of owner of record, if you look at it, as it stands right now, it's not perfect. Jim himself stated it. I have examples of definition far better than what you came up with, that come from other associations. Maybe they have better legal counsel, I don't know. But there are different versions that are better, that encompass everything that we should consider. So yeah, maybe the definition of owner belongs in the referendum and belongs in the bylaws. But other things you're trying to do, as I said in my original comments, do not need to be in the bylaws, which is also a very cumbersome process to update or change. Those of us familiar with our government documents know that resolutions and policy manuals can be outdated quickly, using best practices over changes in federal or state laws or other things. For example, the 40% referendum on a petition, the vote required, it does not belong in the bylaws. I'm not going to vote no, because I don't necessarily agree with the idea itself, but maybe I do. But the reason I would vote no is because it doesn't belong in the bylaws. You're trying to make a bylaws more complex than they already are. How can other associations do everything that they need to do in 10 pages, or 12 pages, or 14 pages? Why do we need 25 pages? Why do we need certain things in the bylaws that absolutely do not belong there? I can go down your list, and I'll sit down with anybody here and show how I can move certain things from where they are right now into the resolutions, or into the policy manual, or turn them into the operational rule and regulation. Think about it. What you're trying to do, if you go ahead, is really likely cause some of these changes to fail. Not because they were necessarily bad ideas, but the way you're going about it is not necessarily the best. Have you thought about that? That's why I'm saying, look it over, put things on hold, look at what you can do to streamline this. Take some of the complexity out. We know boards in the past have not complied with the bylaws. Was it intentional, or was it because they didn't understand them? Or was it both? So, you know, I stand by what I said. I stand by my comments. I believe they're well-intended and very constructive. And just think about it, some of the people that don't have any familiarity with all this, they're going to sit down and look at all this, and they're going to wonder, what the heck do I do? How do I vote? Because the list is just too long, and it doesn't need to. Give it some thought, okay? Really encourage you, give it some thought, and, and take more time. It really deserves more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, yes?
You don't have to say.
No, you could.
You're fine.
Stay where you are.
I'm happy to do that. I'm responding directly to the comments out, Madam President. And that is that you said that the people at this meeting had been unchanged, and we were diehards, all of us. Well, this is the first time I've come to this meeting, so this was absolutely inaccurate. That was one comment. And the other comment is that words are extremely important, and choices of words are extremely important. And in public meetings such as this, we need to tone down the debate and be respectful. And I want to go on record that I did not think that the president's comments were respectful, and I did not think she was listening very well. And that's most regrettable. Because the point, the central point that I'm making is that we want to be a good community, and those kinds of comments do not provide the platform for a peaceful community. Thank you.
I will stand corrected on the comment about the people in the room. You are the new person in the room, I would say. The rest of the people here have been here for almost every other meeting.
Excuse me, I didn't think you were going to ask.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Reynolds?
Cheryl, we have a couple of virtual comments, too. Can you get to them?
I want to take exception to something President Horn said about disrespecting the people, like myself, if they don't know, for disrespecting the work of the board. I take deep exception to that. In my view, if there's disrespect for the work of the people who put in a lot of time on it, it's a disrespect of the board of directors for trying to move this thing before the vote is back, prior to, to impact this upcoming election. the vote is back, prior to impact this upcoming election, and potentially the people who can run it. Mr. Trummell has not addressed the issue. He's the chairman of the Budget Finance Committee. He's not addressed the issue of whether he thinks this is being hurried or not. As an association member, and after I asked about the, I believe is one of the most important issues here, which is the definition of owner of record, after hearing Mr. Farr's response, as an association member, I still don't know if what you're proposing would have prevented Mr. Farr from being eligible to run the last time. Can anybody here tell me with absolute certainty that what you're proposing happens to Congress? Would Mr. Farr have been eligible to run for the Board of Directors last time if what you're proposing was in place at that time? Simple question. And it's the most important issue of the entire thing.
Thank you. Yes, one more from in-house, and then we'll go virtual. Yes, sir. Yes, please come to the tape mark, state your name and address for the record.
My name is sort of old, same rough little guy. What I want to ask you, we got a lot of questions here. Did we vote on each question separated, or is it yes or no for everything?
You'll be voting on each question separately. You'll be voting on each question separately.
Every four steps.
Yes.
Okay. Question 52A. As such, the action to people who conflict cannot vote. There's two questions, three and four. I'm very upset about this. I never been convicted. I never was in jail. I have my speeding tickets. I was one time, this he came to my house, both my percent, he reached to my house, I told him not to vote for the president. This is a discrimination case. If you go back what happened today in America, if we see the African-American people fighting for rights, what is done today? Today, the conflicts can vote. Why can these people not run for the board? Same thing what happened to Mr. Farr. That was an equal employment opportunity case. And I can tell you, I went to it goes appointment for my work. I went to hard times. They did everything to me to prevent me. But I won the case. But I think so, this is why, that question. Even, you know, if you go to the Congress and Senate, there's so many guys who something wrong, they did a conviction, and then they won again. And another thing I want to say, and it was this big paper, I've been here 32 years. Sure, that was the first time that a group went down on the House. Unfortunately, what was written in the paper, all the things what was done, we have to get the general manager, we have to write in the paper that he was the person who saved Ocean Park, not one of you board members. Joe did an outstanding job. We had beforehand some general manager to run it, those hundred thousand dollars and duty debt. That man got us out. And this man was not treated right. That is why he wanted to quit. We know what the story is. Another thing I want to say, we're going to have another election. One board member has always promised that he's taking people to vote or to run for the board so he can be safe. That's why, let the people make their own decision who wants to vote. This is a click. We always got a click in the board.
Thank you. We'll go virtual then. Josh?
First up is Linda. Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Linda Yersey, 35 Water Sound Road. I have two questions and comments. First of all, I think the idea that you have some people participating in this meeting and in other forums about this is directly related to the poor job the board has done communicating with homeowners. We've got a four-page, two-sides document that has lots of legal information on it, but it doesn't clearly explain what you're trying to change. You know, make certain changes to 503. I mean, you need to be much clearer in communicating with people. People are busy, they don't have time to do the legal research themselves to figure out exactly what you're trying to do. Not everybody can sit on a meeting for four hours as we did last time we had a board meeting. So I think you have to really look at how you're communicating, if in fact you want more people to be involved. Now, perhaps that's not really your goal, but I think you want more homeowners to be engaged in this process. So it's worth having a better communication, more clear communication. In the absence of that, you're seeing groups spring up on social media and online and other ways, trying to fill that gap, and they all come from their own point of view, but it's not the official point of view. And I think you need to do a better job communicating with homeowners about what's at stake and why they should care, and why they should vote one way or another, what you're really trying to achieve. And that's my comment. My second piece, point that I'd like to make, I'd like somebody to go back and answer the question of the gentleman who got up and spoke, and ask whether if the current proposed changes had been in place in the last election, would Mr. Farr have been eligible to run or not? That question was asked very clearly by one of the previous speakers, and it was not answered. So that's my, I'll turn off my mic now and listen for your response. Thank you.
Anybody want to address that question, or shall we take another person virtually if somebody else wants to comment? Mr. Daley.
Well, I will just comment from my point of view, but ask Director Farr to comment from his point of view, since this is my motion. When this motion was put forth, I specifically asked Rick if he had any questions, or if there were any concerns that he could not run. And if there were, I would withdraw the motion. And I was given assurances that under this proposal, that he would have been eligible to run, and he would be eligible to run in the next election. So to answer your question, Linda, the answer is, from my point of view, from what I've been told by counsel, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Daley.
Okay, by the way, I want a second comment to Director Trendy. We have talked, Sabodan, for years about streamlining our bylaws. Here's a problem factually that most people don't understand. Until they're streamlined, we're kind of in a situation of a baseball or football team. We have to play with what we got, not what we wish we had. I certainly came from the Columbia Association, and I wish we had a 10-page document that was legally clear. We have a 28-page document that was written 60 years ago, that has inconsistencies on it, that when you go to a court of law, will tear those inconsistencies apart. That's what we're trying to address. Not what we wish we had, what we have to deal with day to day, decision to decision, and putting it back when the court tells you, "You are in trouble in this area. Your procedures suck. Do something about it." Kicking the can down the road doesn't exactly put us in a better legal position. And that is exactly where we're at with some of these issues. So could we have pared it down? Sure. Here's the other thing in paring it down, to be just totally transparent, brutal, and honest with the community. We were given a choice, and the choice is this. We could have appealed the decision that the court came up with. And the attorney said, "When you make that appeal, one side wins and loses," and that determines what Maryland case law will be at that level. Okay? Or we could have changed the bylaws. The cost for an appeal would have been $25,000 to $40,000. The cost of the referendum that you ran for this expenditure level, according to the former president, was $28,000. No appreciable difference in money. Knowing that we had issues outside of the court case, where there were clear inconsistencies in our bylaws, we chose to take the work that had been going on for multiple years by the Bylaws Committee and hold a bylaw referendum, simply because whether we ask one question on referendum, or whether we ask 35, the cost is essentially the same. The difference is in the printing. That's why it's there. And yes, some of these items I will buy into, and I think it's fair to say, are being rushed, but not because of the election, Joe. They're being rushed because we have a document from a legal court saying we have problems that need to be addressed. It's black and white. Some of you sat in the courtroom. Some of you have read the judgment. The problems don't go away over time. They still exist. That's what we're trying to correct. As an interim board, I support what you want to do, and I endorse it 100%. Stream the bylaws down. But taking 28 pages down to 12 is going to take a lot longer, be a lot tougher. And the other aspect of that is on each one of these, if you disagree with it, don't know. I can tell you personally, I'm not wed to any one of these, and I don't believe any of my colleagues are. Voting yes or no is not going to be a victory or defeat. If you don't like it, vote against it. But here's the deal. When you change that from 28 pages to 12, it's going to be winner-take-all. And I guarantee you, there will be things in that winner-take-all that some people in the community won't like.
Mr. Daley.
I have a copy.
Mr. Perron. Do we want to go back to the virtual before you speak, or would you like to go ahead now?
Yeah, let me make, I'll make my comments. They'll be brief. I just wanted to address this idea, this false narrative that's being pushed, that we are rushing this. I think Director Parks will confirm that our original intention with these bylaw changes was to have it done last August, if I remember correctly, right? So this has been underway for well over two years, and, you know, this idea that we're rushing things is just not true. We realized last August, we weren't ready, we hadn't done enough. And then with the litigation that was taking place, we knew that one way or the other, we had to address the various issues that were raised in the litigation. So this idea that we have rushed this is not true. Have we added some things as a result of the litigation? Yes. But there are issues that were raised by the judge that we felt that with everything, with all the other changes being made, that we needed to address them in this referendum. So I'd like to dispel this idea that we are rushing to do anything. We have not been, this process has been going on for over two years, and the original target to get this bylaw referendum done was last August, and we have delayed it since then. And the idea of delaying it further and further, it's just, as Frank said, it's just kicking the can down the road. We have an obligation as a board to address the issues that we've recognized, and address the issues that have been raised by the judge in the litigation, and that's what we're trying to do. And there's nothing nefarious here. This is not, this is not a knee-jerk reaction. This is not, has been alleged in some social media, that this is retaliation against anyone. It's not. It has been going on for well over two years, and we're at the point where something, a conclusion has to be made. And the community will make that decision. The board is putting forth what they believe changes to the bylaw should be. It's going to be up to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Perron. Josh, do we have anybody virtually that wants to comment or ask a question?
One more. Dinah.
What is that?
Hi, yes. My name is Dinah Huffmeister, 43 Ocean Parkway. I'm a first-time commenter. I inherited my mom's house in 2020. I voted for the first time last year. But recently, I've been attending more meetings because of all the drama I had read about in the paper with the court case and stuff. And my opinion is, the board seems to be very vindictive by the rush to send out these bylaw changes. If you think about it, you could save a lot of money just if you send them out, when you send out this year's ballots. I've been trying to get some more of my high school friends who are homeowners.
Dinah, it looks like you were muted.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't know how I hit that. Did my whole thing go away, or?
No, just the last five seconds.
Oh, okay. So anyway, I just feel like the board seems to have the short man syndrome, and the rush to get things done is being very vindictive, and that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, do we have anyone else?
Not a few more. I'll let you know.
Is that it? Okay, I'm going to.
We do have one more, Cheryl.
Oh, all right. Hold that thought, Mr. Reynolds. Hold that thought. We have somebody virtual would take first.
Tommy, you're up.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry I missed the earlier part of the discussion, and I'm coming in late to the town hall. I do have one question. I didn't read on the published information, anything about.
Sir, we need your name and address first.
Oh. Thomas Schwartz, 198 Ocean Parkway.
Thank you.
Okay, apologize for that. I didn't read anything in reference to a proposal on the time that a person has to be a resident, or not a resident, an owner, to be eligible to run for the board. Is that still being considered for inclusion into the bylaws referendum? Or did I miss it?
There's no change to that being proposed at this time.
Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
There's no change to the residency requirement being proposed at this time. What is in the.
So it'll still just be one year?
It will be as of January 1st preceding the election.
Okay. That was one of my concerns I just gave you, and I appreciate it. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Josh, anybody else?
That's it, Cheryl.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence. Thank you for your indulgence, by the way. I'm still, maybe my brain doesn't work as well as yours, but I'm still confused about this issue of definition of owner of record. Your statement that Mr. Farr would have been eligible had this been in effect was not exactly a ready endorsement. I'll tell you that right now. And I didn't see any of these other board members jumping to that conclusion to tell association members that this board, as an entity, the people we elected to handle our business, that this board as an entity believes that had this been in effect, that Mr. Farr ran the last time, that he would be eligible. I would also like to remind the board and all association members that the attorney you referenced, I assume I understand who you're talking about, has been absolutely incorrect in his political, in his legal opinions on some of the most important issues facing this community since he's been hired, since he's been hired. So my confidence level that the attorney told you confidentially as a board member, "Yeah, he would be eligible," I'm not buying it. I would still like to hear Mr. Trummell address that issue, if he would. Maybe he doesn't want to, but.
Let me respond to you, Joe. Let me respond to you directly, Joe, so that we're clear, okay? And I understand what you're saying and respect what you're saying, okay? And I'll be as honest as I can in. And I'll be as honest as I can and while still maintaining attorney-client privilege. We were in a meeting, Mr. Farr was there, our attorney was there, we were discussing this motion. The question was, okay, is there any question about Rick's eligibility to run for the board or to have run for the board? The attorney's response was, no, he would be eligible to run for the board, directly to me. I have not seen Rick's trust agreement. That question you'd have to address to Rick. But what I can tell you is based on that question to the attorney, okay, the attorney responded, yes.
I have to believe it is, but you don't need to see Rick's trust agreement, which is, I don't believe it's in effect anymore, but you don't need to see it. You need to read what you're proposing. And again, it seems to me that what you're proposing says that the trustee must be listed only as the owner of record on the, the state or county records or whatever they are. And I don't believe that was the case back then. I believe, well, I'm not...
I don't know, I can only ask the question, get the answer.
Mr. Daley and Mr. Reynolds, just, and Madam President, just a moment, Mr. Farr would like to address.
Yeah, let me address it real quick regarding trusts because they are very complicated in, in some ways on what is inside a trust document. If you go back to...
That's not the issue, what's in the document.
Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Reynolds, please.
What, what the issue is, is eligibility is somebody who is an equitable owner, beneficiary of that property, which states in the DRs of that. So the qualification piece on that is what the ruling, and, and I had said to myself, I wouldn't talk about this, this case anymore. But I wanted to make sure that there's clarity and understanding that when the judge ruled, because I had, had had equitable ownership in that property, monetary equitable ownership in that property, and that was the ruling, because it was stated in the DRs that an equitable owner or somebody who is equitable or has beneficiary ownership of properties eligible as a, as a homeowner. That's what, and, and as far as what you're talking about enters the trust, yeah, nine times out of 10, unless you're an attorney, you're not going to see what's inside of a trust document. There's a lot of legal things that are inside of it that are only previewed to family and also legal entities that were, that were, in this case, were seen at that particular time.
It's what the proposed change is, not what has addressed the proposed change. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Madam President, you had your answer.
Yes, the streamlining our paperwork, we have a process for the applicants to become verified as candidates, correct? In that process, there is an opportunity for an applicant whose deed does not necessarily reflect clearly their ownership to be able to bring forth those documents, which is what Mr. Farr did and what future applicants will be able to do if they are a member of a trust. I am not an attorney, but I am told, as Mr. Farr has stated, that trust documents are not boilerplate, they're not all the same, that they have peculiarities and specificity that would need to be considered if it is a trustee ownership relationship. So my belief as an individual director, never having seen Mr. Farr's trust documents, is that what I've been told by Mr. Farr and by our attorney, is that his documents did make him eligible and would make him eligible under the new, this proposed definition of owner of record.
Jim, you want to address it?
Please.
My face has been used a couple of times.
It has, hopefully not in vain, Jim.
I haven't changed, my name's Jim Trummell, One Apple's Court, and I'm speaking personally, I'm not speaking for the community. I do not understand the interpretation you're giving for the owner of record relative to Mr. Farr's eligibility in the last election. Number one. Number two, there is absolutely no attorney-client privilege discussing with the association attorney and directors regarding bylaws changes, none whatsoever. I would like to hear from the attorney, his explanation how Mr. Farr would have been eligible in the last election. There is no attorney-client privilege regarding that opinion. Please come forward with it. I'm not going to relitigate the case that took place last year. Anybody wants to talk to me about it? Fine, I'll talk about it. But the only, only equitable owner provision applies, the only position equitable owner applies in our declaration of restrictions is in the security agreement context. None of, there is no general equitable owner provision application in the DRs. Whatever you want to hang a hook on, equitable owner, it isn't there. It is only, only in the security agreement context. Read your security agreements if you have one. And you will see where, like a little title, is going to the security hold, leaving you with equitable ownership and a continuation of your membership if you've entered into a trust agreement, a trust agreement, I'm sorry, deed of trust after acquisition or as part of your acquisition. It is only, only in the security agreement context that equitable ownership, membership exists in this association.
Thank you, Mr. Trummell. Mr. Perron?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can address some of this because I did have a lot of discussions with Jeremy last year regarding this particular issue. And the, the bottom line is that when, as a board, when we addressed how we were going to handle this issue, I can tell you that attorney's opinion was, had Mr. Farr been listed on the deed, as was his, his mother and his sister, our position would, would have been, he would have been eligible. But he was not listed. And Rick is absolutely right, that the argument that they made was based on equitable ownership. And the decision that the board made in regard to defending the lawsuit was that we didn't believe that that met the requirement of owner of record. Now, the judge had a different opinion. I can tell you that there's several members of the board that disagree with what the judge had to say. The decision was made not to appeal the case, so we didn't. And I believe now that the changes that are being made would have, would have, had it, had those changes been in effect, because they weren't, this was all part of the analysis that we did during that time period, had, had Rick been listed as, on the deed, as a trustee, our position would have been, he was eligible.
Thank you, Mr. Perron.
But you asked, Joe, you asked the question...
Hey, excuse me, excuse me.
I'm not, I'm not avoiding you. You asked, you asked, would have...
Mr. Reynolds, please.
You asked if the, if the changes we're making now would have made him eligible last year? And the answer is yes.
Thank you.
That's, it's yes.
Madam President, you wish to continue this and let more people who had not previously spoken get up and address the board?
Let's entertain one more.
One more, yes, sir. Please come up to the...
The line.
The line, to the line. State your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Landis and I live at 237 Winjaro. To be perfectly honest with you, I'm getting a little bit frustrated discussing the situation with Mr. Farr. I realize that, you know, things were not clarified, but it's done. And I think it's a good idea, okay, to make whatever changes are necessary, but constantly going back and pointing at Mr. Farr when that issue is over. So move forward. That wasn't my original thought coming up here. What I wanted to say was that I'm very frustrated and disappointed on how a person is put on the board when somebody leaves. The board has an opportunity then to select who they want. The community had voted and the next person in line as far as votes, I feel very strongly, should have been the person to go on the board. The board doesn't get a chance, or shouldn't get a chance, to elect some of their buddies that think the way they do. That's it.
Thank you.
Madam President?
He said one more, he said add one more. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the town hall, thank you. You, you are free to get in touch with the board after this meeting if you have any other issues that you want them to address. Thank you all for attending today, both in person and virtually. It's very important for the community to be engaged. And as chairman of the communications committee, we always try to make people engaged in the committee. So thank you, I mean, in the community. Thank you so much. Thank you to the board members for being here, such a lovely day.